Good afternoon, everyone. The joint meeting of the Sacramento City Council and the Sacramento Housing Authority will please come to order with the clerk call the roll, please, to establish a quorum.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Harris will be absent. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Shenier.
Here.
Mayor Potem Geta.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Good afternoon, everyone. The council and the housing authority has had a several-week interim here because of the Jewish holidays. Welcome, everybody, back. A Happy New Year for those who have the Jewish faith. But we are here resuming with a 2:00 and a 5:00 meeting. The 2:00 meeting, of course, is the joint meeting of the housing authority and the city council, meeting concurrently. I'd ask Councilmember Jennings maybe to begin with the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nesean people, the Southern Madu, the Valley and Plains Miwap, Patwin-Winton peoples, and the peoples of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the active practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contribution, and lives. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance, please. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings. To members of the public who may not know, when we meet in joint session, so to speak, the city council is also the city's housing authority. We have a separate but complementary team from the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency that leads us in this area. And so, we want to begin here today without objection with item number four, which is the workshop on the -- wait a minute. Did I have that correct? Number five. Thank you. Thank you. The Middle Income Housing Bond Program Workshop. This is an issue and an opportunity, frankly, that's been talked about for some time here within the city, and we thought it would be valuable to have a workshop setting to actually discuss its advantages, challenges, et cetera, and potentially to give some direction. So I welcome all of you. Ms. Dozier, anything you want to say, opening comments?
Just, I wanted to introduce --
I wanted to introduce our consultant, who's been working with us, Kate Owens, and she is going to be doing the presentation. And we've had an opportunity to work very closely with the city staff and come to the information that's going to be presented and get your feedback. So Kate, if you can go ahead with the presentation.
Great. So, thank you for having me here today. I'm pretty excited to get to have this in-depth conversation on an exciting new instrument. Am I -- oh.
So Kate, if you could, at the podium, we'd be able to hear you.
Is this the right spot?
That's better than that.
I'm sorry about that.
I can hear you, too. Those --
Okay, perfect. So just saying, sorry, I'm pretty excited to be here today. I think the Middle Income Housing Bond Program is an exciting development in California, and my firm has been asked by lots of other states to start thinking about whether it's possible and really how to structure this to maximize public benefit. So, the Middle Income Housing Bond Program, the idea here is that you issue 100% of the financing for acquisition or construction of multifamily development. The income restrictions are put on the property as a result. The regulatory agreement is for 30 to 35 years. Typically, we're focused on 80% to 120% AMI for the income restriction. There's some flexibility. Right now, the idea here is that SHRA lead in coordination with the city treasurer's office and economic development housing policy staff, so SHRA will help to analyze and recommend the deals. So, the kind of history in Sacramento is that the idea here is that middle-income housing is a rising problem in Sacramento, so it isn't currently an acute issue like you would see for lower and very low income. So, across the state, missing middle is becoming an increasing issue for 80% to 120% AMI. In Sacramento, about 11% of middle-income households defined as the way the bond program is structured for 80% to 120% of AMI. Those households were cost-burdened, which we define as paying more than 30% of your income on rent. So, that's important for rent. And then, at the same time, we have another dynamic that's happening both across the state and is evident here in Sacramento, is that fewer middle-income households are making that transition to homeownership. So, that's putting more pressure on the rental market overall. So you see more people able to pay more rent in the 80% to 100%, 20% AMI, which is sort of the combination of the dynamics we're seeing on this group. So, what we're proposing here is to really think about how to deed-restrict moderate-income units and maximize your RENA credit. So, it's pretty -- we're trying to hit both of those things with the way that we structure the policy. In general, the way we are -- we've been able to negotiate and make the finances on these deals work is a third of the units would be at 80% AMI, a third at 100, and a third at 120. There's flexibility here. We're saying this is the kind of bare minimum. We've seen things across the state with a portion lower and more market rate, but the idea here is this would be the beginning negotiating point for any of these deals. The trouble -- the point here, the trouble, one of the interesting things is when you have 100% debt financing, it's very difficult to go much below these rental rates because people's -- we need a lot of cash flow to come off the project in order to pay for the 100% debt financing. The other public benefits that we're really trying to maximize here are converting to middle-income housing, so making sure they're RENA compliant. There's state legislation that's enabling this already, and then there's more legislation out there that'll be considered this year, so I think it's important that we continue to watch that. The idea is we can also -- you keep tax revenues if there's a ground floor commercial, and then really trying to maximize local economic benefits, and then potentially have an adaptation from one use to another. These are all the things we think you could -- those are instances, those last bullets here, are instances that we think would really make a project like this something super-viable and exciting. So, the example that I like to reference that's happened in the state is the city of Long Beach worked on a -- or is working on a deal for a new construction project on their old convention center site that was really, really -- that was stalled, and they managed to create a public benefit agreement and use this financing instrument to get a project that was long-delayed developed. And then, they're getting -- it's really focused -- they specifically focus on nurses and firemen, and then they also have a ground floor grocery store. So they hit a lot of economic benefits and local goals with that one project. So that's what the policy is really structured to try to maximize. So, when the city and -- or SHRA, Sacramento considers a public benefit agreement, you have to meet with the idea is that all of these goals, the bare minimums, be met, and that that would be required to get the 100% property tax exemption that's received through this financing. There's a lot of debate across the state about how cities negotiate the fee for their offset property tax loss, because all of the property taxes is foregone, and you don't have to necessarily notify any of the other taxing agencies. You do, but several cities have negotiated a fee that makes up for their property tax loss. We left right now that that's not a requirement. That's something to be discussed and determined as deals come through. And then, I guess, the last note here is it's a legal mechanism that the city and SHRA will have over time. This is like the only mechanism to ensure the property is maintained. That's where this is -- we don't have any enforcement. So, under a traditional SHRA bond, there's enforcement mechanisms where you can ensure the maintenance of the property. The only agreement that the city will have with the statewide JPA and their operating partners is through this public benefit agreement. So there's limited enforcement. There's information that we can request, but making sure that that long-term viability of the property is something that is -- will have to just be a monitoring mechanism, the way this is financed, through a statewide JPA. I should note that SHRA is a JPA, so this doesn't -- this policy doesn't contemplate that SHRA could initiate the bond through that JPA process, but that is something that could be considered in the future. So then, furthermore, the idea here is that the applications will be reviewed by SHRA to confirm that they're compliant with the detailed underwriting guidelines that we laid out in the policy. We're requiring that sponsors have experience with similar projects, so that's just to try, again, to mitigate that lack of enforcement ability. We really want to make sure all the bond fees are identified upfront. Some of the issues in the past with this -- or identified issues with this instrument have been relatively large fees, so we just want to make sure that that's really clearly monitored, because, again, it's 100% debt financing, so that's capitalized upfront. Any fee that you pay upfront stays as part of the acquisition cost and is the long-term bond, and makes it more -- it's a trade-off for affordable -- being able to offer more affordable rents. And then, we also really are trying to make sure that residents have protections and occupancy standards that are traditional with SHRA bond financing. So, the next steps are to pawn, you know, direction from the council to continue. Then, we would continue to review, make edits, and make final changes, and then we'll return to council with a final policy for approval. And we should note, I think LaChelle said it upfront, but we've had good conversations already with other city-level departments, and we've taken on their several rounds of comments already, and we'll continue to work with all of the relevant departments. So, I think that's it for me. Yeah. I will, yeah, take questions.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I'd just like to make an opening comment, and then we'll hear from the public, then we'll hear from the members. I really appreciate the presentation, and I appreciate the thoroughness of the report here. I just want to speak to why this is so important, and acknowledging at the beginning that there's not one program that is going to solve all of our housing challenges. But the reason why this is so important is that we are rightfully desperate, as a city and as a community, to produce more workforce and affordable housing. And whether it's the manufactured housing debate, whether it's how to build up the housing trust fund with greater numbers, whether it's partnering with the state with this innovative approach, we have got to say yes, unless there's a compelling reason to say no when it comes to these kinds of opportunities. And we need to do so with the urgency of time in mind as well. We can't let opportunities pass where they are available, because every, you know, 25, 50, 75, 100 additional units of affordable housing are going to mean something significant for, obviously, some family or some individual. I'm very excited about this and very excited about the other innovations that I know, working with the agency, working with our Office of Economic Development, Danielle Foster, together, some additional innovative ideas and projects that we're going to bring forward over the next couple of weeks and show the public that we can actually produce thousands of additional housing units. I just want us to break through on one or more projects here, under this innovation and under other innovations, so that we can keep aggressively moving forward on this highest priority of our city. Can't think of another priority, frankly, that is more significant than this. Thanks. Is there public testimony? There is not? Let's hear from Councilmember --
If you have one hand raised in Zoom.
I'm sorry.
Call in user one.
Yes, this is Lambert, and I want, any time that I hear LaChelle Dozier, I'm so impressed with her leading the charge, because she's very competent at what's being discussed today. So I wanted to send a shout-out to her, because she is a very competent, very good acumen at what she does, and she's leading the way. No matter who speaks, she's right there. So I just wanted to send a shout-out to her. She's very impressive to me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Okay. Let's hear from colleagues. Councilmember Geta.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, thank you to staff for this presentation, and I definitely also see the immediate urgency to move forward in this. I don't think we should be waiting until the impact to our middle-income families becomes an even greater problem. You know, those who make $75,000 or $100,000, these are clerical workers, these are even teachers, these are folks who are getting priced out of our own city. And so, as far as the question of process here is, I think we need to move also with a sense of urgency, but at the same time, if there are projects that can happen in the meantime, we should begin to continue to move through them using this tool while we figure out what is the overall policy. In fact, I think the projects that we -- that if they do come about are going to help us best find out the right, you know, qualifications and checks and balances on the applicants. I do have a concern if we become too overly bureaucratic in this as we move forward. I think we'll restrict our ability to attract folks who can build in this area. We definitely have some very good, you know, affordable housing entities that are building for our extremely low-income and low-income community in our region here. We've got that mutual housing that's going to be looking at the San Juan site. Again, that's extreme -- that's on the lower-income side and on the affordable side. Our Mercy Housing Project right now is a good example of workforce housing that's getting up to 75K, but this gap in 75K to 1,000K is one that I think is also going to -- if we don't address that soon enough, many of our young professionals, young families will be moving out of the city or looking for housing outside of the city, and that just goes contrary to our environmental goals about reducing transportation time, time lost with their kids, because they're spending it on our freeways. The other piece, you know, when I think about the Aggie Square Development Project, and when we're bringing in a new entity and trying to expand on a project, that's going to bring in a layer of different, you know, job categories. Your -- obviously, your high professionals, your PhDs, your attorneys, your doctors, that can compete in the existing housing market. But where we always find a pinch and a squeeze, and we found this out when we were doing this, is that I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, but only 7% to 8% of those in the UC Davis Health System at the time were living within the geographic area. So that meant that the number of folks working at the UC Davis Health System were commuting into the area. So as we're looking at these amazing economic development tools, whether they be a new hospital, a new biotech center, a new manufacturing center, which are necessary for the economic growth of our city, this tool allows us to make sure that we have a balanced approach to be able to have the housing for those families in that area. So I would just say, you know, Mayor and to Director Dozier, that we move, you know, judiciously so that we can look at this, and not to be so restrictive as we start this out, that it might detract potential folks who want to build for this category of housing need. So I'll leave it with that, Mr. Mayor, and I know you've got to go, but that would be my direction in this, because I think it's only receive and provide direction today.
All right. Looks like we have Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to take this moment to really say thank you, and thank you, LaChelle, and just all the staff that worked really hard to bring this forward to the council for consideration. I think the policy is really a good starting point. I believe it should complement the work that we want to do in terms of building more housing. I don't think it's something that will hold us back from considering projects that can come to us in the future. I do believe, you know, as a city council, we have to be more innovative and to find creative ways for our housing production. I think the policy does provide an opportunity for our city to get more affordability in our projects that would not otherwise have an affordable housing requirement, so really want to thank staff and LaChelle just for being really diligent on this policy. I did have one question in particular about just the policy. I know that we are going to try to do our best to always minimize obstacles to housing options, and I noticed that on page 14 of the policy, there's a $15,000 processing fee for folks who would like to build, and I just wanted to kind of understand the rationale for that, because I know what we're also trying to do is minimize just some of the obstacles, and if you can kind of talk a little bit about the landing for the $15,000, because how much does it typically cost in the city if somebody wants to build something in terms of an application fee?
Madam Clerk, oh, there it is, working. Yes, the $15,000 is --
Hold on, let's go a second. I'll do it. Go ahead.
Okay. The $15,000 is basically to cover SHRA staff time upfront, but it's not just the staff that's underwriting, it's the staff that -- the legal counsel that will be looking on the legal documents. It's everything from the beginning, all the way through, as it's imagined here, the developer will be submitting annual reports, and so we will be also processing those and passing them along to interested entities.
And just for context on that, and how we got to that, other cities across the state are actually requiring that the developer pay for a consultant to do the review, which actually ends up being much more expensive, because you have such deep expertise in SHRA, and you already have really clear underwriting guidelines. We felt that that wouldn't be required, so in fact, you're more competitive than other cities on this front. And furthermore, there's also -- other cities are requiring monitoring fees over the long term that are much higher than anything contemplated here. So, in fact, rather than this being a deterrent, I would say that you're more competitive than other cities across the state.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And again, just wanted to say thank you, LaChelle, to you and your staff, just for your hard work on bringing this forward to the council for consideration.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you. I just had a quick clarifying question for you. Thank you for doing this report. You noted in there that there is no enforcement mechanism for things like maintenance, which I was a little confused by, because this is a JPA, and then I know, like, if we have, you know, an issue with LaChelle, we call LaChelle and say what's going on, and sometimes bring her forward. So I guess I was hoping you could expand on that a little bit, because we had this conversation prior. In context, you know, there were two buildings in Midtown that we were trying to do this agreement with. They seemed pretty confident that there was a way to write the agreement between the city and the county to give us some of the -- or the city and CMFA to give us that type of oversight, so I'm curious why you felt the way you did on that point.
Great question. So, the -- what's going on there is you would require an additional regulatory agreement, and so far, across the state with this instrument, no bond investors or, like, no one on the market has been willing to have a secondary regulatory agreement that goes along with the local government. So, the property-level regulatory agreement sits with the statewide JPA, not with SHRA.
Yeah.
So, the whole idea, or one of the other ideas on the table that's not in the policy, because, again, just to underscore, this is one of several tools you could develop to encourage more middle-income housing. When it's the statewide JPA, not SHRA, there's no -- there isn't a way within the public benefit agreement to ensure enforcement. What we've been able to do, and other communities have gone forward with, is information-sharing only. So there's no -- because there isn't -- SHRA's or the city's money is not on the line here, so it's not in the regulatory agreement in the same way. So the only agreement you have is the public benefit agreement, which doesn't address enforcement of property maintenance. Does that make sense?
You lost me a little bit at one point, so I'm going to repeat what I think I heard you just say. So you started by saying we would need a secondary agreement if we were going to have that type of management, and that most cities don't have that secondary agreement. It doesn't mean we can't find some sort of other agreement with them as a condition of their doing this project in the city, or are you saying that there is no mechanism that exists? Because you kind of said both things. I just want to clarify.
To date, there has been -- what I was saying is, to date, there's no bond that has a secondary regulatory agreement. That's not the way bond investors don't want to have, a third party that's not party to the financial debt that you have as the acquisition financing. So, that's why it hasn't been done, and I have -- I, colleagues, other consultants, all the other municipalities have fought to try to get that, and that has not been possible. And repeatedly, it's been sort of a bond structuring issue, and it also protects the city. We should also note is that the city's protected this way from any issues with the bond.
Okay.
If you start to get in different legal territory.
Okay.
So, I think that's just one of the risks of this instrument, hence the underwriting upfront, to try to make sure that there's adequate property capital reserves upfront. I think we put pretty, like, large requirements there.
Okay. I guess I'm going to ask the question a different way, if that's okay? So, we're saying that it hasn't been done. Is it possible to form some sort of agreement that allows us some role in management of these buildings moving forward, or you're saying it's not possible?
I'm not a lawyer.
Okay.
So I think you should probably check with a lawyer on that.
That's helpful, because I think --
Our financial perspective and our understanding of how the bond market responds to this is that it is not possible, and we've -- and council in other jurisdictions have determined that it is not possible. I don't know what your council has determined on that, but I can tell you that other municipalities' council has determined it is not possible, and that we understand that it's not possible from a financial perspective because of the complexity of enforcement that it creates.
Okay. I guess I would have loved to have heard maybe from CMFA a little bit today. That's something that the California Municipal Financing Authority, which is the entity that's proposing this, because I know in our discussions, which were quite robust leading up to that item coming to council, they seem to have ideas as to how we could try to address this, which would be great to bring forward, since I know that was one of the big red flags in this report that didn't quite match what they had said. So I guess I also am interested in seeing this move forward. I would like to see us can bring in those voices to this conversation. You know, the last time this came forward to council, there was a lot of disagreement over different conclusions, and this is a new thing, and so I think that there probably are a variety of opinions that somewhere in there will find the right mix for us in terms of how we want to proceed, but I do want to make sure that we're bringing in the perspectives, at least from CMFA, because in my conversations with them, they seem to have figured out some ideas here that I don't think we're fully considering, and that's not so much for you. I guess it's more direction for SHRA staff.
If I could just add, Councilmember, when I had conversations with CMFA, they were very open to adding things to the public benefit agreement, but -- which I think answers some of the questions and concerns you had, but they were very clear that the only one that monitors the agreement would be the JPA itself, the property. JPA, the JPA would monitor the property, and that CMFA is the lead in that JPA.
But the JPA is with the city, right? So I guess this is where I keep breaking down in my understanding, because if we're a part of this, and that's part of the condition by which they're able to issue bonds, we wouldn't have zero role in oversight.
You would have a minor role. They would have over 51%.
Yeah, but it's not zero. Like, so I guess the thing that confused me about this report is it kind of made it be like, they're on their own, there's nothing we can do after we issue these bonds, and maybe there's a majority stake, and maybe there's some nuance in this, but like, the JPA is with the city. And so I guess that's part of what I'm trying to figure out in my mind, is what we are agreeing to some sort of relationship financially and otherwise with this entity when they issue the bonds with us. So I guess -- So I guess I'm trying to figure out, I mean, it wouldn't be a 0% stake, and, and what does that mean in terms of ongoing decision-making or, or roles here?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Dozier.
Am I muted?
Go ahead and put that, yep.
Okay. One of the things that we really would like to do after getting direction from you is to then go out and have the conversations of the draft with CMFA and any of the other entities that are very interested, so that we can get their feedback and input, and express to them exactly what you're talking about in terms of what the city would like to see, and what their, you know, response would be. So that would be our next step before coming back to you.
Okay, well, I guess I don't want to get super prescriptive in terms of what I'd like to see. I'm not expecting that we're going to be able to walk in there and be like, that light's been out for too long, and you must replace it tomorrow. Like, I guess, I, I think that what struck me in this report is it basically said, there is no role, and, and I, that doesn't add up with what I've talked to Ben about at CMFA, and so I guess I just want to make sure that the direction is, I want to figure out some of the complexities here, I'd like to get their feedback, maybe on this initial report, and maybe some other ideas they might have for addressing the challenges. One of the things that was exciting, I know to the mayor and I, when we brought this item forward several months ago, was that it was kind of the first time we were going to do this specific kind of model, and I know other cities have since done similar variations, but I do want to leave some space for feedback and maybe some other input and, and discussion and ideas without presupposing an outcome here. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Ms. Dozier, did you have any additional comments you wanted to make to address this item?
No, I think that what I'm hearing is that the council is very interested in us moving forward as quickly as possible, getting the feedback from all of the interested parties, and then coming back with a final draft for review and approval.
Yeah.
And also to continue these conversations with any existing developers who are in the midst or trying to get a deal done, so that we don't just wait.
I also heard a little bit of, like, comments about maybe moving faster, if possible, and then I heard a comment about maybe some comparative analysis to other jurisdictions like cities on costs, make sure that that's fair and even, and then some clarity on control. What does that control dynamic look like? So maybe if you can hit those three points when you come back to us?
Okay.
Thanks for getting it started, appreciate that. All right, so the mayor took us to that item, which I believe was item five. Ms. Dozier, is your entity here for item one, or should we start with two?
Yes, she is here.
She is, okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, then we'll go back to item one here and work our way through this agenda. There she is.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Ashby, and members of the council. It's nice to be here back in person in the council chambers. I am Sarah O'Daniel, and I am with the SHRA, and this afternoon, I wanted to share with you a success story of a household that received an emergency housing voucher, or EHV for short. And this household is now stably housed in our community. But before I introduce our participant, I would like to provide just a brief background on the program. In July of last year, SHRA received 494 EHVs from HUD to assist households that are homeless, on the verge of homelessness, or escaping domestic violence. We quickly mobilized and hired staff, worked closely with the Continuum of Care Agency Sacramento Steps Forward, to identify households, issue vouchers, and help them find housing in this tight rental market. Currently, we have 174 households that have already leased up in a unit in a little over a year, and 315 households that have vouchers issued to them, which is a total of 489 households that are either leased up in a unit or have been issued a voucher. And so today, I am pleased to introduce to you one of our recipients of the emergency housing, emergency housing voucher, and her name is Jamina Glover. She is a single mother, she and her children were under eviction and on the brink of homelessness when she received our voucher. So I'm not going to take her thunder away from her, so I'm going to introduce her, Ms. Glover. She is on her lunch break and here to speak to you.
Welcome, Ms. Glover, we're so happy to have you.
Hi, thank you guys for having me. Well, like she said, my name is Jamina Glover, I'm a single mom of three. I've always been, you know, able to hold down a job, but last year, I was running from a domestic violence issue. I got out of that situation by the grace of God.
Good for you.
And I got extremely sick. So I end up having to go into the hospital for like, a month and a half to two months. Of course, I lost my job, and I was currently facing eviction. I was placed with this lovely lady right here, as my worker, and I had, I think it was like, two weeks left before me and my kids were going to be put out on the street. She did everything in her power to help me try to get housed, and I met a landlord, and we did all the paperwork for the voucher and stuff, and he told me that we were going to be able to move in. He told my worker as well that we'll be able to move in. And then he pulled the rug from underneath us, and I was back to being homeless. And he came up with another property, and he said that this time it's okay, everything's going to work, and, you know, just get the stuff done. So literally, we passed the inspection, and like, 10 minutes after the inspection was passed, he sent me a text message telling me that he gave my unit away. And I was heartbroken, and so I called him, and she stayed on the phone with me, and she told me everything's going to be okay, and that she was going to try to help me. And she did exactly that. Me and my children have been housed in July because of her and the people that she worked with. This program has really, literally changed our lives, and I'm so grateful and so thankful to you guys, because that was really, really hard, and I had nowhere to look for help. I didn't have no parents, everybody is, you know, gone, so without y'all, I wouldn't be here today, and I appreciate you so much.
Well, number one, you know, we're here for you, not the other way around, right? That's our, that's our whole goal, is to find a way from this stinking dyes, to get out to people like you and get those resources to you. Number two, good on you getting out of that domestic violence situation, good for you. I know it was a really rough ride, but you did it, you did it, and you brought your three kiddos with you. Congratulations to you, what a, what a victory in your world. And number three, this program was designed exactly to do this, to help find somebody like you with your kiddos, fighting an uphill battle, and put you in a better spot to succeed. So I'm really glad that you took your lunch today to come talk to us, I know my colleagues are too. We're all just, this is the kind of, this is what we live for, this is why we do this job, find people like you and, and do what we can to help. What is your name?
My name is Cher.
Cher, and you're an S, and you're an SHRA. Thank you.
I'm a housing locator.
You're, thank you. Thank you for helping her, thank you for helping us, thank you for choosing this as your career path. Thanks for getting out of your seat to come be with her. Sarah, thanks for bringing us this amazing story. I know maybe it doesn't seem like a lot to you, but it's like fuel in our tanks, it's motivation for us to keep going, keep fighting for these kinds of programs, keep fighting for people like you. I was a single mom too, in this town, and I know exactly what it feels like to be housing insecure. And someday, maybe you will sit in this seat and lead our city, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not beyond you, it's well within your reach, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yeah, I, I just want to personally thank you on behalf of all of us for your tears, your emotion, for sharing your story with us. We all understand that without support from each other, you know, there's no way we can achieve the goals and aspirations that we want to achieve. For what you are, you've shown resilience, you've shown that you have a plan in place in order to take care of your family, and your children will remember everything that you've done. And your children will be better, because they will make sure that this never happens again. They will be able to go to a higher school, earn a higher dollar, be able to buy whatever the case may be, but you've set the foundation for their success by what you've done to help them. So, I mean, I just applaud you for, as she said, getting out of that horrible relationship that you were in, but staying in a relationship with your kids to make sure that they never experienced homelessness. That's you, and you should be proud of yourself, and I know we're proud of you.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I share that with you today.
We sure are. We're really proud of you, good on you.
And the organization that helped you, you know, I, I can't say enough great things.
She's everything.
And, and you know that, I mean, because not only did they help you, but they've helped others in the same situation. If they could be here today, you're speaking on behalf of all the folks that they've touched along the way. So we give you a round of applause, but we also give them a round of applause for impacting the lives that they've impacted, so good job.
Thank you so very much for spending your lunch with us, thank you for coming and sharing your story. SHRA and your team, thank you, thanks for showing up every day to go to work and, and help Ms. Glover and the other Ms. Glovers of the world, just know your city's pulling for you, you're a hero, all right? You're a hero, keep going.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Thank you. What a star. Okay. Thank you, Sarah, for bringing us that story, really, really great, really proud of your team. Item two, Madam Clerk.
Item two is a city council item, approval of the 2023 one-year action plan for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Home Improvement Partnership Program, HOM, Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AHOPA-funded Projects and Programs, Amendment of Priorior Action Plans, and Amendment to the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency SHRA Budget.
Hello.
Hello, good afternoon, Celia Anigaz, Program Manager, here with SHRA and the Federal Programs Division. Just like to say, it's great to see, be in front of people, live people versus a screen. It's, and to hear, it's, I'm going to say, it's hard to follow that presentation. And in a moment, I'll cover some of, some statistics of people we help, and so it's great to put a face to some of the numbers that you will see, because some of the various funding sources help people throughout our community. So today is the 2023 Action Plan Presentation. I'm going to talk just a high-level overview about the federal programs and what are requirements from HUD, briefly go over some accomplishments in 2022, and then look forward to what that action plan in 2023 will include. So it's a high-level overview, every five years, HUD requires the City of Sacramento to prepare an analysis of impediments to fair housing, to identify and what are the issues in our community. We prepared one as a regional, in a regional approach this last time that was completed in 2019, that included 14 jurisdictions in Sacramento County and Yolo County. And that is really important, as we know, housing is just not within our borders, but is really, goes beyond that, other cities and other counties. Then after we completed the analysis of impediments to fair housing, we're required to prepare and this body to approve a consolidated plan, which is a plan that goes, include, is over five years, so 2020 to 2024. It looks at and takes into consideration those impediments to fair housing that were identified in the analysis, in the AI, and then prepares community objectives and goals to be addressed by the various funding sources. So the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Home, Home Partnership for Affordable Housing, ESG, Emergency Solutions Grant to address and prevent homelessness, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS to provide rental assistance and, as well as services. Then, and this was prepared, as I mentioned, for and completed and approved by this body in 2020, sorry, 2019, through an extensive amount of community outreach, as well as consultation with our various other public entities in our region. Then every five years, this body approves an action plan, which provides funding using those various funding sources for activities, so projects and programs for the community. I go do this little bit of history, because now we're having to start that cycle again. So in 2023, we will begin the analysis of impediments to fair housing, so you will see our office doing outreach, engaging the community to get input, as well as from electeds and our agencies to prepare that analysis. And then in 2024, we will prepare the consolidated plan to be approved and to begin that whole cycle again. So then the next consolidated plan will start in 2025. So as I said, it's a few accomplishments on the infrastructure and public facility projects. The first I'd like to highlight is the Robla Community Park, this renovation of existing playfields and accessible ADA sidewalks. So the playfields were, are for soccer and volleyball, and then there are also some improvements, some replacement of park benches and of various amenities. So not only do, do we help with renovating existing, we also help to provide funding to new parks. So River District Basketball Court, of course, is part of the overall plan to address neighborhood improvements in the River District to support the Marisol Village plan for transforming Twin Rivers into Marisol Village. So there wasn't enough room on the existing site to accommodate the basketball courts, which were heavily used by the community, and so there was a felt, a real need, how do we provide, continue to provide that amenity? The city had some existing land just a few blocks away, they were also able to purchase more land to have a full basketball court and, at this site. So we provided some funding to that, and the city provided the land and, and other resources. So in the end, there is a basketball court, and at, which is a multi-use asphalt court of, which is a full-sized basketball court, a footsall court, and there's some overlays for hopscotch and, and foursquare, as well as outdoor table tennis, permanent outdoor, outdoor table tennis facilities, and a small picnic area as well. So this is just a, two blocks walk from Marisol Village, and it's, I was just there the other day, it's, it's a great new park in our community. Next is the Matsui Park Access Improvement. So many of you, I'm sure all of you have been to Mozac, and so right next door is Matsui Park. And in between, if you were walking along Jiboom, it's very difficult to get to Matsui Park. So this is access improvements, ADA accessible improvements, right between Matsui Park and Mozac, to provide easy access to that facility. So again, this, we're complementing existing improvements in parks, and of course, that great Science Center in our community. The last, we often provide funding for street improvements, and this is the El Paso Boulevard Road Diet. This is from Marysville Boulevard to O'Farrell. It's the addition of bike lanes, pedestrian improvements, and signals, and signal and intersection improvements to make that street more pedestrian-friendly. So again, lots of park projects and, as well as street improvements. Here's a public service activities, using all of those various funding sources, CDBG, ESG, HOM, and HOPOL, we provide, not HOM, but those other three will provide a variety of safety net programs, providing meals to seniors, as well as homeless assistance for those unhoused, home repair for seniors through both the SHRA's program and Rebuilding Together, as well as providing funding, operational funding for shelter bed nights in shelters that the city operates and SHRA operates. This is, this is an overview of actually the 2023 allocations, sorry, for that typo, but this is the big, this is the allocations by overall categories, so public, infrastructure and public facilities, just a little over 1 million, housing development and preservation, homeownership at 1.2, public services, just size of 600,000, grant planning and administration, that is for staffing to administer all the programs, as well as the planning effort for our analysis of impediments to fair housing and the consolidated plan. That HUD loan repayment is repaying the Section 108 loan that is of 16.4 million for Marisol Village to install all of that backbone, new infrastructure that is of 16.4 million for Marisol Village to install all of that backbone new infrastructure. So, that's the new streets and curb gutters, wet and dry utilities, as well as it'll be providing funding, partial funding for the new Child Education Center. And then, finally, we always include a capital reserve, and especially in these times when construction prices are so a bit out of whack, this is a cushion in case any of those projects that we're, we'll be approving, and you'll see that detail, go over budget. So, proposed for 2023, these three infrastructure projects, Norwood School Access Improvements. So, this is near El Camino. So, in that area, there's a need for new curb gutter and sidewalk, infill of sidewalks, pavement reconstruction, as well as improving existing drainage system, installation of marked crosswalks, and street lighting, and signal modifications. Broadway Complete Streets, Phases One and Two, between Broadway between Third Street and 24th Street, essentially a road diet, providing a buffered bike lanes, allowing for on-street parking, and improving the pedestrian safety. So, shortening up those pedestrian crossings, as well as improving bus and light rail service. I'd like to highlight that this is a $13.4 million project, and the CDBG is, I'll say, only 300,000, but we've been providing funding all along the way for design as well. And we are usually, and in this case, the critical local match for larger funding. The city is getting funding from other sources, from state and federal sources, so this is the leverage that CDBG can provide. And the last is Babcock School Master Plan. So, if you may recall, a few years ago, the city made improvements around Babcock School to improve the safety for the students that may be coming north of it, across El Camino, as well as just installing basic curb gutter and sidewalk. So, that's been complete, and that's a wonderful addition, safety improvements for that school. And for those of us who've been around for a long time, remember the old Sacramento Inn, which is now a new apartment complex. Out of that apartment complex is generated Park Impact Fees, or PIF. And so, the city will be receiving those PIFs and want to invest it in a park. There are no parks in the immediate area. It's about two, two, maybe three blocks from Babcock School. So, we've partnered with the school and the Parks Department to, in advance, prepare the master plan so that those PIF monies can be used. So, it's critical that, that these funds can be used as match and help to lead and plan in the future for many projects. So, we're very excited about that working with the Parks Department. Oops, sorry, wrong way. All right. Then, these are our ongoing programs, funding in 2023 for housing and public services, which I've sort of talked about already, but it, so that includes CDBG and ESG and Home, Hopwa and Fair Housing Activities, who I didn't, didn't highlight. Again, we, as many jurisdictions, including the City of Sacramento, the County of Sacramento, the cities of Citrus Heights, Rancho Cudova, Folsom, and I think that's it, in Rancho Cudova, all pull our funds to fund the Renters Help Line. So, this is the Fair Housing Activity that we, we do on an annual basis. All right. And that concludes my presentation. I'm open for any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak on this item?
Vice Mayor, I have no hands raised to make public comment on this item.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much for the presentation. And so, as always, lots of good things happening in SHRA. Thank you for giving us that update. Great work. Let's move on. Item number three. Go ahead. This is the 39th and Broadway Senior Apartments Project. Go ahead. Oh, do we need to move, do we need an official motion? Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. You want to make, move it?
I'll move, you know, thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll move to approve the item, staff report, and thanks, Sally, for the great work on this and all the staff associated with it.
Appreciate that. All right. Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Gara, seconded by Councilmember Jennings. Thank you for the great presentation. Sorry, escaped me that we needed to accept the work. Thought we were just discussing all of your hard work. All right. I don't think we need a roll call. Let's just do it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, signified by no or abstain. All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Item two, or three, moving on to three. This is the 39th and Broadway Senior Apartments Project. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. I'm Mayor Council Christine Wyker from SHRA. The report requests approval of an additional $1.5 million in financing to the 39th and Broadway Senior Apartments Project. In June of 2021, SHRA entered into a disposition and development agreement with Related Company for five Housing Authority-owned parcels located on 39th Street and Broadway. In addition, $6.1 million in loan funds were approved for the new 43-unit development consisting of studio and one-bedrooms, with affordability restrictions between 30% and 60% of area income. Since June of 2021, the developer has been awarded 9% tax credits and $1.9 million in state funds. They have submitting platting entitlements and began environmental cleanup activities, which will be completed this fall. Sorry, out of breath, something about masks, I think, at first. Due to recent construction costs and interest rate increases, staff is recommending an additional allocation of funds to fill the current financing gap. The need for additional funding at this time is not unique to this project. We have seen construction costs increase on several projects recently. John Stewart Company will be the property management company, and Life Matters will provide onsite resident services, and when complete, development will be managed in conjunction with the Arbers at Oak Park, an existing adjacent 56-unit senior development also built and owned by Related. So, in closing, staff recommending approval of the additional funding, and if approved, construction will, is expected to begin in early 2023, and staff's available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. I do have one colleague sign up to speak, Councilmember Shanir.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is great. Do you have a public comment?
We do. Do you want to go after that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. We have, I think, one person. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
So, I have two people in chambers and then one online. First is Matt Kelly, then Chris Palomo, and then Lambert Davis.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Asti and Councilmembers. My name is Matt Kelly. I am a Sacramento resident of just over 33 years, and I'm here, obviously, to talk about the 39th and Broadway Senior Affordable Housing Project. Projects like this are obviously of dire need in our community, affordable housing. We obviously don't have enough units, and especially seniors, it's hard enough for them to find housing. So, this project is really good for that, but there's also another group of people that are having trouble affording housing. A lot of them are construction workers. Over 50% of construction workers, or, excuse me, nearly 50%, depend on some type of government assistance, which affordable housing would be, many of them needing to live in it. I think that the people building these houses, the affordable housing units, shouldn't have to live in affordable housing. They should be able to afford market rate. So, I'd like to see something put in place that when these affordable housing projects are being built, that the people working on them will make a prevailing wage, will have health care, so they don't have to worry about their family's, you know, health and safety and that coming out of their pocket. They'll be hired locally, so they're not wasting their money on gas and, you know, adding to the carbon footprint of this city. The, just the people building this city will be taken care of, and I just, I think they deserve that, because without them, we don't have this council that we're sitting in. Nobody has the homes that they go home to, and I just don't see why these people aren't valued more. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Chris Palomo?
Good evening, Councilmembers and the Housing Authority. First, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Chris Palomo, and I'm a field rep for the NorCal Carpenters Union, Ida Local 46, here in Sacramento. I'm here to ask a few questions and talk about, you know, the 39th and Broadway Project. So, to start off, we at the Carpenters Union, we're actually, you know, we're excited to see these projects, and we appreciate the developer for the investment, you know, into the area, but our main concern is the hard-working men and women who are actually going to build this project. According to a recent study from University California Berkeley Labor Center on the public cost of low-wage jobs in the construction industry, found that two out of five families of construction workers are enrolled in at least one safety net program to bridge the gap between their wages and the cost of supporting their family. This comes at an annual cost of $28 billion in public funds. Also, nearly 31% of construction workers lock health insurance. That's nearly three times the rate for all workers. We have seen the devastation that COVID-19 has brought to us, and that all these workers, they should have health care, too. They shouldn't be excluded. There's a lot of construct, currently, there's a lot of contractors out there that are building these projects in the city, and they don't care about the workers. They do not pay them a livable wage or provide them with health care. I want to know what you, the leaders of this community, are going to do to make sure that on this project it doesn't happen, and on future projects. These workers that bust their asses every day to build this community, they deserve better, they need to be taken care of, and we need to do better to support them. Again, thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Yeah. Thank you for coming, both of you. Thanks for sitting through and hanging out so you could speak on this item. Appreciate you. We do have one more speaker online, Mr. Lambert Davis. Go ahead, Lambert.
Yes. Yeah, I think I had a technical difficulty on, when the lady was speaking that was crying, and I wanted to comment on that.
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay. What, what I gathered from what I heard from her is what caused her tears. And if this person, landlord, it sounds like a landlord pulled a rug out from under her, the SHRA should ban that landlord from participating in that program, and that landlord should be brought up on criminal charges. Now, the other thing that I wanted to state was that Del Paso Boulevard, I heard someone mention Del Paso Boulevard to O'Farrell. This is why I protested it being called the Del Paso Boulevard Road Diet Program, because if you know the city like I do, Del Paso Boulevard veers to the right, and if it goes straight, it becomes Marysville Corridor, and O'Farrell goes down with Del Paso Boulevard. So, that right there shows that Marysville Corridor didn't receive any construction because they veered off and went towards O'Farrell. You cannot fool a native. If you know the difference between Del Paso Boulevard and then go to Marysville Corridor, you'll know why it said O'Farrell. So, get on the ball down there, City Hall, because that's an intentional move. You should have kept coming straight down Marysville Boulevard, because they need road repairs as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thanks for calling in. Okay, that's it on our speakers in chambers and online. So, Councilmember Shanir, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Christine, could you, so first of all, thank you. This has been a long time coming. I'm thinking seven years or so? Have we been working on this one? More than that?
A little bit more.
How time flies.
Yes, it does.
Could you talk about, a little bit about the Arbers and the census there? I don't know if you have that information. How are they doing? Because it's the same population, really, that they're going for, and the same developer.
Yeah. The Arbers is operating great from our perspective. We don't, you know, hear any complaints from the neighborhood. They, the residents, we don't, you know, seem to be doing well there. It's the same, it's seniors. I think it's 56, did I say? Senior unit development, same sort of demographics, about 30 to 50% of area median income. So, I think that having this property next door is just going to enhance their quality, both, both developments' quality of life, because they can go to either property for services or adding services, more community space, another community kitchen that they can use and meeting room. So, I think it's just going to be great to have both properties there.
And the management will be for both properties, so there's some economies of scale there as well.
There will be a manager, assistant manager at this site, and then at least one or two managers at both sites, but they'll go back and forth. So, yes.
Do you know, are we at the point of having a construction company or a general contractor signed up on this? I know Related is the developer.
Yeah. So, Related, and I did have some folks reach out to me from the construction trades, and made sure I passed the mantra to Related. I am happy to say that this project, because of the federal dollars in it, is subject to Davis Bacon, so Davis Bacon wage is absolutely will be paid. It's also subject to Section 3, which encourages, of course, employment of public housing and low-income residents. But I do not believe that they have selected their general contractor or their sub yet, because they will not close on their finance, all their financing for a few more months. I'm so, I'm sure there's lots of opportunities, but I would encourage everyone to reach out to Related, as they will be employing those contractors.
And you've told the Carpenters Union.
Yeah, in an email, yes.
Great. All right. Well, this is a very much-needed project in an area and neighborhood that needs it. Certainly, seniors' housing is incredibly important. We have, and this is for our two friends who have come here, thank you for speaking today. I believe on the 25th of the month, we're going to talk about affordable housing, and hopefully bring quite a few units back to this council to, okay, if all goes well. So, with that, I'm happy to move this item.
All right. Very good. Congratulations, Councilmember Shanir. Next up, Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Gara.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. You know, I wanted to, again, I think some of the questions were asked already, you know, I think, but a bigger one is, is if we have any kind of prequalification requirements for contractors when, when we're approving these projects, has there been thought about that? I mean, generally, you work with the developer, but there's, but there isn't any prequal requirements at, at the point of application. Is that, is that correct?
At the time a developer applies to SHRA for funding, they often have an architect on board, they may have a cost estimator, sometimes a general contractor, but usually they're not that far along. We've got some construction costs. It's usually not until after all the financing has been realized, and as you know, that can take a year or so, or more. It's at that point when they start actually putting the project, when they get close to all their financing, putting out a bid, getting all their contractors and subs at that point.
I guess, I mean, I, so I agree, this is a long time coming. It's a good project. The fact that it's close to the other one, so that the services are available, but, you know, we just had a conversation about the middle-income housing, and how many folks that are above the affordable housing world can't even meet the market rate. So, I just, here's where I'd like to figure out what the right timing is, and, and get, and start getting a policy in place on, on how we make sure that our projects, whether it's a housing project, whether it's a sewer project, how all these projects that actually help move us forward can have co-equal goals on increasing our wages, making sure that those who we're working with are using some level of state-approved apprenticeship program, so that we're increasing the skill level in our community. You know, the Aggie Square Project with the One-Stop Job Center to try to increase the skill level around, you know, Stockton and Broadway is a good example of, of that. So, I mean, so in this, in this case, prevailing wage is a requirement, because it's a federally-funded program, but, but is, what are the requirements on, say, you know, health benefit for workers, retirement, you know, are there any, any requirements because of it, meeting Davis Bacon right now, or any of our other standards that show that, okay, they actually are hiring, are that we are recruiting contractors or that are, that are providing health benefits to their, their workers?
I am not an expert on that, but I will tell you this, that the agency tries very hard, and it has a whole department, that before construction, two times before construction begins, right when the financing is about to close, we have a meeting with them to hook them up with our staff and other agencies that do local hire and apprentice and training programs. And then, before construction begins, we have a second meeting to make sure they know they have all these reporting requirements to us, so we know that they are fulfilling the requirements of reaching out to, to those different organizations. And I would, I would say that just about all of the affordable housing projects we do, I should say all, are, are either state prevailing wage or federal Davis Bacon, but we could get back to you on the benefits. I'm not sure about.
No, that'd be good, and specifically on the local hire as well, just because, I mean, we're, we're talking about meeting our co-equal goals on, you know, not having people driving an hour for work and whatnot, and making sure that we're hiring local, locally. So, those, Director Dozier, those are my concerns, if we can make sure that as, as the, the Housing Authority moves forward, we have clear policies about, you know, how we're meeting all these co-equal goals of not just building housing, but making sure that we're increasing the, the work and wage opportunities and skill level here locally. With that, Vice Mayor, I'll, I'll second the motion, but I would like to get a report back on, on the, all those, the other specific pieces, yeah. Because to your point, many of these projects, they're going to meet the prevailing wage side, but what about the, you know, are they, are they involved in an apprenticeship program, you know, is it local hire? If it's local hire, then that apprenticeship program is benefiting our local folks. And then, you know, ensuring on the health, on the access to health care side is, is important as well. So, thank you, Director Dozier.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Gara. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you for unmeeting my mic, too. Very efficient, Vice Mayor. So, I think, I was like, oh, I'm going to need it.
There's a next speaker button the mayor just doesn't use.
Okay, perfect. Yeah. Yeah, I was going to echo, and I won't repeat, the questions of my colleagues about, I didn't know what Davis Bacon entails. I would love a report back on that, especially on the benefits. But I do really want to appreciate and just name a little bit of the elephant in the room, which has always been this kind of false narrative around posing more units versus higher wages and really thinking, and I know we've started some conversations with the carpenters and others about strategies to do that. I don't know how we get around that without increasing the pot of money available for affordable housing. And so I guess that's more of a commentary note for my colleagues here, so that I think there is just an inherent tension in the fact that we're giving so little money to affordable housing and we're asking them to create hundreds of units, and we're creating this incentive in a way for some of our nonprofit friends to seek the lowest bid possible so that they can produce those units. And so I just want to name the tension, the policy tension here, and really recognize our friends again for sitting here through this items to comment on that, and looking forward to continuing that conversation as we go into 2023.
Okay, very good. Great comments. Executive Director Dozier, there are way too many titles on this dais now for me. I can't keep them all straight. I'm just going to call you guys by your names. Do you have anything you want to add to that or any comments you want to make to Councilmember Guerra or Valenzuela?
No, we can follow up with the information that you requested so you can kind of see all of the historical data on our projects. And I, too, just want to say how excited we are. This is a long, long time in the making. In fact, when we first did the Arbers, we wanted to do them both at the same time, but due to circumstances, we had to separate the two projects. So it's good that we're finally getting to the finish line.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much, and thanks to the commenters for sitting through, too. All right, next up.
We need a.
We need, oh, yeah, we have a motion and a second, right, already? Moved by Councilmember Shanier and seconded by Councilmember Guerra. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Great, unanimous. Congratulations, Councilmember Shanier. I know you worked on that for a long time. All right, next item, item four. This is our Bridge Housing Meadowview Navigation Center.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and members of the council. My name is Sarah O'Daniel with SHRA, and I'm here to provide you with an update on emergency bridge housing, or EBH, it's a mouthful otherwise to say it every time, and the Meadowview shelters, and request additional funding to continue operations at both sites. I would like to also introduce you to Troy Lynch. He is a program manager with SHRA, and he works very hard on all the shelters that we administer on behalf of the city. And he's going to help with just some pictures. So this is a picture also of the original EBH project where we have 24 cabins. So as the world was shutting down with the pandemic, we started gearing up, and the city asked SHRA to administer two projects in 2020. The first one on April 28th was the EBH project, where we brought forward a staff report in April to house transitional age youth, or TAE, in 24 cabins. And this was placed on a vacant parcel on Grove Avenue that's adjacent to St. Paul's Church of God and Christ in Council District 2. The goal was to stabilize the youth, link them to services, job training and employment, with the ultimate goal of housing them in the community and preventing the youth from becoming part of the chronically homeless population here in Sacramento. With council approval, we worked really hard, and we had the cabins built, smud donated, air conditioning and heating units, cameras were placed on the perimeter, we had community and office space provided in addition to bathrooms and shower facilities for the youth. Three meals are available to them every day, as well as laundry services are available to them. First Step Communities was hired to be the onsite operator, and we have Steve Waters and Joe here in the audience, who, they are with First Step Communities, and they were hired to be the operator. And the youth are referred to EBH through 211 now and the coordinated access process. And so here are pictures that we're showing you of, you know, the cabin, as well as what the original site looked like. If you drive by Grove Avenue, you could miss this site because it is tucked away in a single-family area with a little bit of multifamily there, and it's very quiet and very, very peaceful. The cabins really blend into the community, and there are no queues outside the gates at all of people wanting to come in. And this program has been very successful despite it starting out during the pandemic, and there were limitations to services and housing as well during that time. During the past 28 months, 267 guests have been admitted. Seventy-nine of them, or 30%, have indicated that they are chronically homeless. As of August 31st, 136 guests are housed, and 68 either came in with employment or have been linked to employment since then. Companies that they have worked for, and this is just a few of them, is Chili's, Loaves and Fishes, Chick-fil-A, Shasta, Lennon, Harbor Freight Tools, Subway, so, you know, stores that we go to all the time. So in addition, the adjacent land next to the 24 cabins became available in 2021. This property was made available to us by the pastor, and 26 additional cabins were built using state emergency solutions grant or ESG funds for now a total of 50 cabins. And here, Troy is showing you a picture of the new cabins that we have here. There's a lot more space on the adjacent property there, so you can see the cameras and you can see some of the cabins. At the expanded areas, what was done was the property was fenced, an administrative trailer was put there, we have restrooms and shower trailers, we've installed camera systems, and built the 26 additional cabins that are equipped with beds, limited storage, and heating and air conditioning. Both sites are connected to each other, but there is only one entryway into the cabin community in order to control access to the site. The initial phase of this initiative was for two years, and it started in June of 2020. So SHRA and the city applied for and received $5.6 million of state HAP funding, or, sorry, I should say that, State Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Funds, or HAP Funds. And those were for the first two years. Those funds were to last until May of 2022. However, we had cost savings and have been able to keep the project operational for these additional four months. But it has come time that we need additional funds immediately to keep current operations going smoothly and to expand the initiative for the 50 TAE. The additional cabins are ready right now to house additional youth, and the city has applied for additional HAP III funds. However, those funds aren't available right now to transfer to the housing authority. And the total cost for one year of operations is $3.2 million. $1.1 has already been expended with the cost savings from the first phase, as well as some additional community development block grant or CDBG and ESG funds. So at this time, we are requesting the allocation of $2.1 million to fill the remaining gap, which is a combination of, I'm just going to say the acronyms now, ESG and CDBG funds, and $92,500 of City American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funds for indirect administrative costs, because those costs, indirect costs cannot be paid by CDBG and ESG funds. So I think, Troy, you've shown all the pictures of the new site, which included the shower trailers, the ADA cabins, as well as the overall site. So switching over to the Meadowview Initiative, as mentioned, 2020 was a very, very busy year for us. We had to get that up and running as well. And so in addition to EBH, the city requested SHRA to oversee the administration of the Meadowview Navigation Center in October of that year, which is in Council District 8. The city and SHRA applied and received $6 million of HAP I funds to operate that center for two years. City Public Works took the lead to oversee the construction of the sprung shelters at Meadowview Road, 2812 Meadowview Road, and the shelter opened on October 1st of 2020 to 100 homeless women. And again, this was at the height of the pandemic. Now here, when you drive by Pennell Center, you can't miss the sprung shelters. They are huge structures, as you can see here. But again, there are no individuals queuing up outside the site. It's all done through a coordinated access process. The campus includes two sprung structures, one for dining and the other for the dormitory, with accompanying restrooms, showers, and administrative space. Three daily meals are provided, and kennels are available for a limited number of pets. The goal of the Meadowview Center is to house unsheltered homeless women, understand their barriers to housing, stabilize them with services, and link them to income resources as necessary, and help them find suitable housing. The shelter operates from a housing-first, low-barrier approach to provide services and housing support. As promised to the community, priority is given to women who are living in the surrounding area to come into the shelter. Volunteers of America was awarded the contract to operate the shelter as they have extensive experience working with homeless women. Amani Sawyers Rapaski from VOA is on the line. She's unfortunately not well and isn't able to be in the chambers, and she's here to answer any questions. In addition to VOA, Downtown Street's team works with the guests to provide them with basic employment skills and to clean the area surrounding the shelter. Sacramento steps forward, assists with referrals through 211 and the coordinated access process. Again, rehousing efforts begin upon entry with the goal to house the guests within six to 12 months. With two years of operations just passed on October 1st, most again, was, most of which was during the pandemic. So within the last 22 months, 701 guests have been admitted, and 310, or 45%, have declared that they are chronically homeless. 172 women are currently housed, and 71 either came in or have been linked to employment at this time. Their projected annual costs are $3.6 million, and the city has applied for HAP III funds for continued operations of the shelter. However, our current funds are low, and we are requesting approximately $280,000, which is a combination of ESG and CDBG funds, as outlined in the staff report, to fill the funding gap until we receive the remaining HAP funds of $3.3 million. As I conclude my presentation, in light of being transparent, I do want to mention to the communities, we publish weekly and monthly reports on both shelters on our website at www.shra.org, where additional details are available on who is coming into the shelters. You know, operating the shelters 24 hours a day, seven days a week, is hard work, and especially adding during the pandemic, it's even more challenging. And I want to say that both First Step Communities and VOA have done an outstanding job at EBH and Meadowview respectively. And as mentioned, we have Steve Waters and Joe from First Step Communities here in the audience, and Amani is online. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. This concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you very much. Do we have public speakers at all, Madam Clerk? Yes, Vice Mayor, I have one speaker, Lambert Davis. Okay, let's hear from Mr. Davis.
Hello, yes, this is, as a person who listens to City Hall as though I'm pursuing a degree, it's ama, it's, no, it's amazing when I hear this phrase, how hard people are working. The reason I say that is because someone just said a minute ago that the people who were working at those fast food places, they were working hard to avoid being homeless. So to me, it's relative when I hear people are working hard with this and that. If you receive a contract and you're paid for that contract, to me, I don't see where it's hard. If you can't get the job done, then you shouldn't be rewarded, you shouldn't be awarded a contract. And as far as staff, that's administration costs. If it's too hard for you, then hire some people who will work hard. Because, you know, that's kind of an insult to people who really want to work, and they hear how hard it is, and actually you're receiving very good pay to work. So to me, when I hear a lot of acronyms, it sounds to me like a boondoggle. And those of you who aren't aware of a boondoggle, you need to study what that is. You know, that's a boondoggle. Trying to help the homeless is a great vision, but if it becomes a boondoggle, then it will never reach its goal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
I have no more speakers.
All right, next up then, Councilmember Leloi.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to thank the staff, SHRA. I'm familiar with the Grove Project, and as you indicated in the beginning of your conversation, you can drive by this facility and completely miss. Like, you have to make a U-turn. And, you know, I took the time and actually walked around the community and actually knocked on doors and asked them what they thought about this facility. And I was very impressed that some didn't even know it was there, and the other ones were just completely fine. And I've had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Waters on a few occasions. This is one of those projects that is truly delightful, because not only the neighborhood hasn't changed its dynamic, we're helping a very vulnerable age group, which is that team. And, you know, congratulations to you and Steve Waters. We need more projects like this that will actually help communities and think about the community and how they can engage versus let's just build and who cares about the community. So I'm grateful to you all for taking all these into consideration, and I'm a big supporter of this project, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Leloi. All right, Councilmember Shanier?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a quick question. I know when we did this, and I remember these conversations pretty well, because there were quite a few of them at the time. These were actually built for two individuals per cabin?
They were originally built for two.
Right, and I know that we only have one because of COVID. Is there a thought about going back to the original? Because I know it's a pretty expensive outlay for this program.
Well, one of the reasons that we weren't able to go to two was because insurance was an issue. They weren't able to get insurance for two per cabin. And then the additional.
They being, I'm sorry?
First Step.
First Steps?
First Step. First Step Communities, yes. And then the other reason was also based on the severe challenges that some of the youth face, we just thought it would be in the best interest to have one per cabin, unless it's a familial relationship, then we do allow two per cabin.
Do we have any of that?
We have had, we have had a few.
At this time?
Not at this moment, not at this moment, though, but we have in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, back to Councilmember Leloi.
Yeah, and just on that note, I don't know, have you seen the size of these cabins? To fit two teenagers in there, I think you're kind of, it's a recipe for some kind of a disaster, especially they're so vulnerable. They are very, very tiny. I mean, if you're, if you picture a dormitory room, I think it's half the size of a dormitory room. Like, you know, it's, the first time I walked in, and when I was told that's one per cabin, I was like, that's a good thing, because they're very, very tiny. And I really think if you put, especially with this group, which is the youth and teenagers, if you try to put two in one cabin, I do think it's a recipe for disaster. So I don't recommend that, and again, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for those comments. I just have a couple of comments myself, too, on this one. I had the opportunity to really take a lead on this project at the time that we moved it forward, and I'm not the biggest fan of tiny homes. I don't like Councilmember Shanier, I worry about cost on those. But this particular site, it makes sense because of the amenities that are on site. It was already built to be an entity where people would share spaces, share a kitchen, share a living room, share a laundry room, share some showers, and so it works. And then when you, Executive Director Dozier, suggested that we focus on transition age youth, I really felt like it would work. And I know you- And I know you have been acknowledged many times for your focus on transition age youth, both in the state of California, but also nationally. This is the type of model I know you have been asked about when you speak other places. And I think District Two, I know the previous Councilmember for District Two and the current Councilmember for District Two are both really proud to house the project there. The neighborhood, I think, is really proud. The people that own the land, the pastor that we worked with is very proud. He's a wonderful individual, very patient man. This project was complicated with litigation on the front end that SHRA, and particularly Executive Director Dozier, walked through carefully to make sure we could get to a point where we could really help people. And Councilmember Chenier and I have been in this building for 12 years, and I think Steve Waters has got to be near the top of the list of people who's been meeting with us that whole time, right, to bring this to life. You've got to be really happy, Steve, sitting out there now with this project in place, and you're working on it, and you're helping these youth, and it, and it's working. And so good on you, good on everyone involved in the situation, really. You got to be proud, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, I bet. All right, well, I think it's a good one, and, and I'm proud that we, we pushed across the finish line for Grove. It was a very tough project, actually, to stand up, but good on everybody who, who really worked on it. So I don't have any other speakers on this item. We do need a motion. Councilmember Laloie, did you want to make the motion to move this?
Yes, if there's no public comments, I.
No other public comments?
I'll second.
Councilmember Van? All right, moved and seconded. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Really good work, you guys. Great job. All right, I think that concludes our agenda. However, we may have people who want to speak. Do we have anybody signed up to speak, Madam Clerk?
We have one speaker.
I have one speaker for matters not on the agenda. I have two. The first is Lambert Davis. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Again, this, this has been, to me, when I hear, as I said, working hard, my example is Lucille Dozier is working hard. From what I see, the results, and when she's ever questioned, she always has an answer. And if she doesn't have it, she'll get back to you. And then last but not least, to, to me, the person who never says she works hard, but I studied the chamber during the pandemic, and that's Minty, because she was in the chamber during COVID. And she, and I rarely saw her get up and leave the chamber, like I see other people leave, go in and out. And so it's relative when I hear who works hard. I, I still am stunned that she's in the chamber, because two and a half years in the chamber, and the other lady across from her, who used to take our paperwork, to me, they should, they should be at home, and whatever they do on the computer, they can do that from home. So that, that's just my take on it, based on what I see, not what I hear. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Kay Harris.
Good afternoon. Can everyone hear me okay?
You can.
You can. Perfect, thank you. On behalf of Marisol Village, mixed development community, I would like to say thank you to District Three Councilmember Harris, and specifically the District Director David Gonzalez, who attended our resident meeting on September 29th at 6:00 PM. While actively listening, engaging with residents and management alike, it was definitely a pleasant experience. When I reached out to Councilmember Harris, his staff responded without delay, accepted the invitation, and agreed to participate in events and activities moving forward. We don't always know the immediate or long-term impact of our efforts, but I have to say this was exceptional. Anytime we can introduce city government in a positive way and in an informal setting, it's a win for all of us. I want to thank you for allowing me to share my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for calling in. Really appreciate it. Okay, council colleagues, do you have anything to say on this housing agenda item, or Executive Director Dozier? Well, Executive Director Dozier and I do have one announcement for all of you relative to this particular body, and that is that this Thursday at 10:30 AM, we are going to open Vista Nueva, which is the shelter, the, the hotel conversion of the Staybridge that we all approved a few months back in North Natomas. You are all welcome to join us. It is at Promenade Circle, 140 Promenade Circle, at 10:30 this Thursday. I'd love to have you, if any of you would like to come and just cheer us on. This is a partnership between SHRA, Jamboree Housing, the City of Sacramento, and of course, a lot of funding from Governor Gavin Newsom's Project Home Key Resources. So thank you, guys, all for your support to get this far. What that means is on Thursday, we'll open the doors. It's 116 rooms, so we'll take over 200 people who are experiencing homelessness off the street. Of course, they will all have children, because that's our focus target area for that site. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for being supportive of that project, and I hope you'll come out on Thursday, if you aren't already inundated, at 10:30 on Thursday morning. Thanks to all of you. Madam Clerk, everybody, that's it for our Housing Authority meeting.